Okay, the time is now six oh two and I call this March first, two thousand twenty-three Borough Council Workshop Meeting to order. And we'll begin with the pledge. Please rise. Okay, before we begin, we have Counselor Hicks by Zoom, so I'll need a motion to permit Counselor Hicks to attend by video. A motion by Counselor Mellon, is there a second?
A second.
A second by the Deputy Mayor. I'm sure there's no discussion on this item. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Welcome Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Next, citizens to be heard. If there's anybody here who would like to speak on any topic of Borough Government, please come to the podium. Was that a hand up? Sure, come on up. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Very familiar. I know you guys always love when I come here.
We like the sweatshirt, though.
Yes. James Evans, I'm at one five seven B Street. I just wanted to raise the issue. I came to the Borough, I talked to the utility department, I believe it was last week, maybe it's been seven to ten days ago. But with talking in the community, not just on B Street, but around the community, monitoring social media, there seems to be a issue with the implementation of the utility bill with the trash now added to that. I know I was double charged. Well, on the bill, it's double charged. And a lot of people, it's showing up as double charged. And then talking to other residents in the community, they're also concerned because their bills are not a calendar year, quarter, like some of them are like November, December, and then January, but they're being charged a full bit and some have issues that they think it should be prorated for monthly and then charged per quarter. But the other issue that, talking to some people throughout the community, neighbors, I haven't researched myself, I've looked at my tax bill, but apparently there's some disconnect with how the tax records and the codes are that's showing some properties as being a double residence as opposed to a single residence, that they're either apartments or something. And I think the reason I want to raise the issue is, is that if this compounds and then you start to have to worry about people being double charged, triple charged, or if the tax records are wrong, this could snowball and be a real headache for everyone. And it's not just isolated to ones or twos. I mean, we've talked to and followed on social media, and a lot of people are putting it out there that, hey, they have an issue. I know a lot of people will make their complaints on social media and won't necessarily bring it here, but I wanted to bring it to you guys' attention so that it doesn't compound and doesn't cause problems, not just with the utility bills, but potentially with tax records and anything else that's associated with that. So that's why I wanted to bring the issue up before it becomes, you know, where people end up losing trust if they get charged, you know, double, because a lot of people do the payment, automatic payment, and then you know, they go back and find out, oh, it's been two quarters and I've been double charged. It just creates a headache and then people are going to end up losing trust of being billed correctly.
Right. And I know on that issue, you're not the first to acknowledge that staff was already on top of that and I assume is working through the details of that. It was accounting coding issues, as you mentioned.
Yes, sir. We have a process in place internally here and for example, individuals that come forward, pose concerns about their bill, we look closely at those. When we first generated the database, of course we did, we relied heavily on the county assessment records. If they indicated that a property was a two-unit building versus a single-family dwelling, yes, they got billed for, you know, two trash bills on their particular utility bill. However, when a resident calls in and poses a concern with us, we have an internal process that we take the concern. We tell them that there's two ways to get it adjusted. One way is to go to the county assessment and ask that, you know, they change their code. Or we can come out as well, one of our staff members from our code department, validate that it's only one unit or how many units it is, and we make the appropriate adjustment. Would that be fair, Richard?
When we do that, do we report that back to the assessor's office?
The assessor's office.
I'm not sure that us reporting it would, they'd probably just have to go out and check anyway.
Right.
Correct.
It's probably worth a communication if we're, you know, keep them in the loop. You know, and not to inundate more work that's sort of outside your realm, but if we are aware of that,
Right.
An email over to the chief assessor might be helpful.
Richard, I believe at last count too, didn't we have approximately fifteen? Wasn't it fifteen or so?
That we're currently working on?
Yes.
Yes, and Codes has started going through that process and notifying us, and as we get that notification, we're reaching out to the individuals. It does take some time. And back to your point on notifying the assessment office, there are certain situations where we are, you know, reaching out to them, but I don't know that our own assessment is, I think they would have to go out and make their own judgment on that.
Yeah, yeah, they would. And I happen to know that the chief assessor is a big fan of us and she watches our streaming meetings. I'm not sure why, but she does. So she might hear this exchange. But, okay. All right, thank you.
And the only other thing I would offer a suggestion, and I know it can be a double-edged sword by doing it, but I know you guys are active on posting things on social media, but even on a banner on the Borough website for people to queue them that will also, yeah, you don't always want to find bad news, but if it helps everyone in the process, that you don't have like a constant feed where people can say, okay, yeah, there's an issue and you can identify to try to solve it upfront, to say, hey, this thing's not just fifteen, it's one thousand places within the borough, so that you can, you know, maximize the effort to try to do it, you know, as you best see fit. That's what I would say, because a lot of people don't know, some people don't check their bills and then they come back and and next thing you know, it's compounded and then you're dealing with all that back headache of trying to go back over months to figure out, hey, what's the deal here? That would just be my input from an observation.
Great, thank you. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
I just kind of have a follow-up question based on something Mr. Evans brought up, and I know that this was kind of brought up at the Town Hall Memorial Park just regarding utility bills being quarterly. Is it feasible long-term for us to shift those to monthly? I mean, obviously, it's not like tomorrow we're going to be able to do that, but I was just kind of curious as to what the status or situation with that is, if there is any information.
We can certainly explore that going going forward. I will tell you, I hesitate just slightly. We modified the program, I think it was back in oh nine or twenty-ten. We actually went from a monthly bill to a quarterly bill due to the workload at the time. And, but as we become more automated with, and, you know, technology advancements are being made, it could certainly be something that we explore going further and I know, forward. And I know that we did touch on it previously. We also encourage residents that they don't necessarily have to wait for their quarterly bill to come out. We actually encourage if they want to, if they want to get on a payment plan, a monthly payment plan to help soften that quarterly bill to do so. We welcome those conversations and we are still pushing very promoting very heavily our utility billing, bill assistance program to residents as well. And ask that they take advantage of that. We have the forums here on site as well as the Stewart Community Center and online. And I know that Stephanie does a really good job trying to promote that through social media as well. So, but certainly Counselor Hicks, or Counselor Stewie, we can look into that.
Yeah, and I mean, and that makes sense as to why there was that shift. I just was just kind of curious, just because it was brought up. So I appreciate that. Thanks.
Yeah, I think that was the context was if we get to a point where we do everything electronically, makes sense to be able to do potentially do that monthly. And I know I've in the past had folks over a number of issues, you know, with quarterly billing, you don't necessarily see your use, so if you have, that's one of the, can be one of the indicators that you have a leak that you're not aware of and that sort of thing. So it's nice to have that more frequent feedback too. So certainly when we get to that point, we'll want to consider that.
Yeah.
This may be a nice segue as well.
I would add regarding the leaks, since we transitioned from the old meters to the smart meters with the radio transmitters, that provides us a mechanism to notify the customer whenever there's an unusual event where the meter is continuously running. I think Richard does that on a weekly basis?
Right. Each week, we get a notification of properties that could have a leak and we send out a letter to those properties. If it's particularly high leak, we also try to reach out via the phone to get in touch with people so that they can address the leaks quickly. And the good news is, in a lot of cases, you know, we're getting very good feedback on that. People are having very high leaks where you're having hundreds of gallons going through the meter each hour, and we're able to notify them in a couple of days. So it really saves them in comparison to previously where it could be a quarter of huge leaks that they would have, you know, to deal with.
Yeah. Is there some threshold on that that triggers the communication?
Right. So we have a threshold. It varies based on the meter size, but the minimum that we're checking is ten gallons an hour, which is typical for a toilet leak. And then anything above that. And then if it's fifty gallons or more, we're trying to get in touch with the people via the phone as well.
Yeah. What it doesn't catch is like, over the last year, my dripping tub faucet, it happened gradually. And then I looked at my gun. So, yeah, yeah. So it doesn't, yeah, right, just so people understand, it doesn't catch everything. You still need to be mindful of what's going on around your house, obviously.
Correct.
I think we'd also be remiss that we just put that policy in place. When was that, Richard?
It was the last couple of months.
Yeah. So we've just done, just finally gotten that in place.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Any other comment from the audience? Do we have anybody by Zoom? Okay. Thank you for the comment. Next, the meeting minutes. Is there a motion to review and approve the February one, two thousand twenty-three workshop meeting minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Deputy Mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Perry. Any comment, questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Public Works Committee.
I make a motion for council to adopt a resolution providing for a temporary lift on parking limitations at all times along the west side of Fairground Avenue from West Penn Street north to the railroad crossing. This action shall be for a trial period of not more than ninety days.
It's a motion by Counsel Perry for the temporary lifting of parking limitations on the west side of Fairground Avenue. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Stewie, any discussion? I'll call the question and all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Under the Public Safety Committee, I know we, I'm assuming you came dressed up for a reason. It's not the chickens. No, okay. Invite them. And I'll invite you up to the podium to give us a bit about the reenactment as I make the motion. But I move that council approve the closure of the first block of West High Street from Hanover Street to Pitt Street from seven AM to seven PM and the square from three PM, three PM to five PM, extending to the first block of West High Street, East High Street, North Hanover Street, and South Hanover Street on June tenth, two thousand twenty-three to commemorate the one hundred sixtieth anniversary of the shelling of Carlisle. Approval is contingent upon the receipt of a valid certificate of insurance form naming the Borough Carlisle as an additional insured and the applicant reimbursing the Borough one hundred percent of the variable and ten percent of the fixed costs associated with this event along with PennDOT approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hicks. Would you, would you mind coming up? Opportunity to advertise the upcoming event in a few months. Can't dress up and not take the podium, right?
I mean, we kind of do it all the time. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Courtney Coffin. I was here last month as the president of Historic Carlisle, Inc. And Chris Jones is our committee chairman for this event. Really, Chris has been doing all of the orchestrating and has managed to drum up a lot of interest and a lot of support. So the one hundred and sixtieth shelling commemoration is going to be an incredible event, not only for the education of the community, but also to really get downtown businesses involved. Not only am I president of Historic Carlisle, but I'm also newly on the board of DCA. So as a business owner downtown, I, you know, we are deeply invested in seeing not only the history be celebrated, but also to bring people who wouldn't necessarily spend a lot of time downtown Carlisle, bring them down, show them around. And the commemoration is definitely going to be an event that will draw a lot of attention, a lot of positive attention, a lot of educational opportunities and a lot of new interest in Carlisle that maybe isn't horsepower-related. We'll have horses, but different horsepower. Do you want to say anything about the event?
I mean, Courtney pretty well, she pretty well spelt it out. We do have a lot of a lot of local support from the community, from local businesses and organizations. The Sons Union Veterans are doing a lot with this. The Cumberland County Historical Society, the National Civil War Museum in Harrisburg's involved. Excuse me, of course, the Downtown Carlisle Association, Creative Palooza. The list goes on and on and on. We're adding more, it seems like, every day. So we are very excited for this. We think it could really be an incredible event for Carlisle, the likes of which has not been done here before. It really is going to be an educational experience for all ages. There's something here for one to one hundred. There'll be something to interest people.
And just as an update to the requirements, we do have the insurance with the Borough included and we have been given PennDOT approval.
Great. You're well underway. Yeah, PennDOT approval is sometimes the toughest part of anything.
Well, thankfully Lieutenant Miller has been a huge help in that process.
And I want to comment to publicly, to be thankful for your cognizance of, I think originally you were going to have this the following weekend.
Right.
And it would have fallen Juneteenth weekend and sort of repositioning the event. It's one of the things that I talk about every time somebody new comes from town, to town, I like to take them downtown and show them through the scars from the shelling of Carlisle, among the other things to talk about this wonderful town. But everybody's always surprised by our part in the Gettysburg campaign and what's been left all these many years, one hundred sixty years later.
Right.
Yeah.
We always say that Gettysburg had a very, very eventful three dates and we don't discredit or discount that in any way. But Carlisle had a significant effect and was significantly affected as well. And we are almost always overlooked. So we'd like to shine a light.
Yeah, and that was, that was one of the things that with doing this on a different date as opposed to the one hundred and sixtieth anniversary on July first, doing it on June tenth, that way the Gettysburg reenactment is far enough away that we can still get spectators and reenactors here and kind of let Carlisle shine a little bit and truly commemorate the community action is the big thing here. How the community came together not only during an enemy occupation, but then afterward during about seven hours of bombardment is truly an incredible story that needs to be told.
And so, right.
And in the spirit of the community action, you know, we didn't want it detracted from the Juneteenth celebration.
Sure.
So, you know, we'll, we'll take our weekend and allow Juneteenth to really have their own moment to shine because that history is significantly important. So.
Yeah.
We're happy to step in.
Make sure you understood, you know, my appreciation just for that and for the, you know, for the event in total, because I think it's a fantastic effort and I really look forward to it.
Well, thank you. Everybody has been so receptive, so helpful, so open to communication and, you know, so we've been very, very appreciative of that. The community's been fantastic.
Excellent. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion?
Not on the motion, just a quick comment just because you're here and I love sewing and I follow you on Instagram and it's so impressive that you you make that. And I just want you to know, I sew all my own dresses from my council pictures, so, but I don't sew that. But really, top-notch work. I'm impressed.
This gown nearly didn't survive and velvet is just a heck of a thing to work with. It's the back that's the problem.
But it looks majestic when you walk, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. It's unanimous.
Fantastic. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay, sustainability and community planning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item tonight and I present it so that we don't run afoul of our codes keeping up to date, but I propose that Borough Council consider modifications to Chapter eighty regarding keeping of chickens as it relates to performance standards and fees.
There is a motion by Counselor Hicks for modifications to the keeping of chickens ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the Deputy Mayor. Is there any comment?
Well, there's no comment, but I thought that we, you know, it'd be helpful, especially for folks that are listening in, and I do have, you know, at least one comment from a resident, but also so folks can understand what this action would be. So Jared, do you want to? You don't have to. I mean, I can read it, but you did all the, all the legwork for this.
I can talk about it, but I've been told by the staff that this better be brief. There was a lot of work that went into this some years ago. And so my review of this was just to see if there were some things that could be done to make it a little more of an accessible program for people without deviating from some of the controls and protections that people sort of maybe relied upon in twenty eighteen. So that the items that I considered were very few. The first one is to sort of recommend getting rid of the annual permit requirement. So Borough Code requires that everybody that gets a keeping of chickens permit for fifty bucks has to come back every year to get it renewed. And that triggers an inspection from staff. We go out and check to see that everything's in compliance. In reality, out of the ten people that actually applied for and received a chicken permit, only three people re-upped their permit. You know, non-compliance aside, this sort of tells us that either there's not enough complaints to generate staff going out or the program efficacy really isn't worth continuing. So I recommended getting rid of that and issuing a refund for those three people that actually applied for renewal. The other item to consider is the sixty-foot minimum separation distance between a chicken coop and a residential structure. The way that's written, a residential structure is sort of ambiguous, it's kind of vague. It's like, what, which residential structure? I think what was intended is like what some other municipalities have adopted where there's a separation distance, if there is one, from a structure containing a dwelling. And then the separation distance, I looked at a couple of different places, well, a handful of different places, and only two of them that I could find actually had a minimum separation distance. One was thirty feet and one was twenty-five feet. So ours at sixty feet seems like, you know, kind of a big distance. Putting myself in the shoes of former staff, you know, looking at what we have for code compliance and staff support to sort of manage the program is quite different than what it used to be. We got four staff that are routinely doing patrols, talking to people, you know, introducing some zoning concepts and code issues that maybe they weren't aware of. So I think we have better outreach these days than maybe what we had in the past. So the reason I say that is the sixty-foot distance basically makes it so, you know, we're probably never going to get a phone call if you cite your chicken coop sixty feet away from the nearest house. You know, the chances of any kind of nuisance odors, even if you don't keep the thing up, are pretty low. But the reality is, the zoning or the code doesn't doesn't preclude staff from going out if there is a nuisance issue and addressing it. So even at sixty feet, if you're having like nuisance odors or noises or you're attracting critters that shouldn't be there, the staff can still go out and say, we got a problem. You know, you're negatively affecting your neighborhood, even with that sixty-foot distance. So closing the gap still doesn't preempt staff from going out and addressing nuisance issues. It just makes the program again a little bit more accessible at thirty feet. The other thing at issue was a minimum lot size requirement in zoning. A lot of times you'll have a minimum lot size for certain land uses and, you know, at the time, they must have thought that five thousand square feet was a reasonable limit. I couldn't see a reason for it. Again, we have a separation distance requirement, so the geometry of a lot wasn't regulated, just the minimum land size. So we could have, you know, your typical like rectangular shaped lot at five thousand square feet, or we could have a lot with, you know, fifteen feet of frontage that's sort of a spaghetti shape. It doesn't matter. You just had to have minimum five thousand square feet. So I thought if we get rid of that and we keep the separation distance, really haven't taken anything away from the program in terms of, you know, the you know, sort of presumed protection that you get from a minimum separation distance. So getting rid of a minimum lot size, I don't think takes anything away from the program. And then the last thing was, you know, just to sort of clarify, and I think I may have stumbled a little bit here, so for Borough consideration, Council consideration, yard as defined in the zoning ordinance, it's basically the shared lot boundary or sort of the right-of-way lot boundary. And then your structure setback. So it's that little piece of land between your lot boundary and your structure setback. The way this thing is written now, it says that, you know, the only place you can put a coop and a chicken shelter is in the rear yard. So that little building envelope that's sort of outside of the structure setback isn't really included in that. And when I look at it, it seems like what the creators of this ordinance wanted was, you know, for the accessory structure, the coop to be treated as sort of a less prominent feature on a lot than say a house or, you know, something like that. So I wrote it, I wrote a revision, you know, that no chicken coops or runs shall be permitted in the front or side yard of any lot and the chicken coop and shelter will be considered an accessory structure. And then I went on to say that the side yard would be less than say a principal structure setback. I think the way I wrote it is consistent with what the original code wanted, which is to get the chicken coops and runs out of the front setback and out of the side setback. But in terms of how this was executed, I think I would make one, maybe recommend one change, and that's to write this as though no chicken coops or runs shall be permitted in the front yard of any lot. The chicken coop and shelter will be considered an accessory structure. So all that does is sort of delete reference to the side yard. And it would allow people to sort of maintain that thirty feet of separation distance inside the chicken coop where they could put like an accessory shed or something in the side yard or the rear yard, but not encroach, you know, too close on a neighbor in a way that they wouldn't expect the physical form of that neighborhood to develop with a, say, a shed that was closer to the property boundary than a coop. So I would make that one little tweak. So that's just delete or side, just to make that clear. Um, so I would make that one little tweak, so that's, uh, just delete or side, just to make that clear. Other than that, I, I think I addressed all the, all the concerns, but, uh, we'll take constructive feedback.
Thank you, Jared. Um, I did wanna read into, um, the record, a, a letter, um, that we did get from one of the residents. Uh, um, folks weren't all able to attend, but, uh, so I, um, and some of these things are addressed already from what you've said, but I'll just read it. Um, dear Borough Council, thank you for the opportunity to share our perspectives on Article three eighty-eight related to backyard chicken keeping. My husband Ben and I are excited to welcome a small flock of chickens to our backyard this year. We've picked out the salmon febriles uh, as our ideal hen. They're known to be friendly, comical, and a good choice of small, for small spaces. Unfortunately, due to the current requirements outlined in chapter eighty, we do not meet the requirements set by the ordinance. Code eighty-nine C one B, uh, requires a lot, minimum lot size of five thousand square foot for backyard chicken keeping according to Cumberland County Property Map, Mapper. Our lot size is forty-six eighty. So we are three hundred and twenty, uh, shy of the requirement. After revising the property mapper, we see, uh, many other lots, uh, would also be impacted by this requirement. Not everyone has the potential means to purchase or rent from a property that meets that lot size requirement. Chippensburg Mechanicsburg boroughs do not require lot size for backyard chicken keeping, and I know that Jared also had looked at some of these, um, uh, municipalities when looking at his work. However, um, uh, however, it does not require a setback, um, from residential dwellings, but does require the chicken coop run to be placed at least five feet, uh, from property boundaries. I kindly request the Borough Council consider reducing or outright removing the minimum lot size requirement, as well as reducing the sixty-foot setback requirement. Both amendments would better align to, uh, Carlisle's ordinance with others in Cumberland County and allow a greater number of residents to keep backyard chickens. The fees for keeping of chickens and zoning permits are nearly cost prohibitive for us as a single in- income family. An annual keeping of chickens permit of fifty dollars is burdened, some especially considering the cost. The other costs required to acquire, house, feed, and properly care for a flock. Additionally, it is not until reviewing the chicken keeping permit application that I realized the additional zoning permit with an additional fifty-dollar fee is required to place the coop run on our property. Reducing the permitting fee or extending it to cover multiple years would be beneficial to us and others on limited incomes. For example, the state Borough College, uh, Borough of State College requires a thirty-dollar zoning permit and thirty-dollar license. That is good for three years. If the resident shows proof of completing a course on chicken keeping, the thirty-dollar license fee is waived. Additional amendments within the ordinance that could enhance the experience of backyard chicken keeping in the borough include allowing proper composting of chicken waste bedding for home garden use. This would reduce waste going to the landfill and ease the burden of Carlisle's municipal waste services, and allowing for free-ranging chickens during the day within a fenced-in yard. Free-ranging chickens would be better to eat any pests in the backyard and be overall happier and healthier. Thank you again for this opportunity to provide comment on the current ordinance that allows backyard keeping of chickens within the borough. We hope the amendments, we hope that amendments to the ordinance can enable us and others to access the joys of urban chicken keeping gratefully. Kelsey Mummer, resident at one twenty-five West Louder Street. So, I think most of what you said, um, did address that, I mean, the free-ranging, um, I, I don't actually recall the composting. Is, is there any prohibition to composting, um, chicken waste in our ordinance? I don't actually recall.
Um, I'd have to look at it. It basically says you can't openly store and use bedding, uh, properly disposed of on a weekly basis, but I, I can't imagine us digging through properly composed material to see if it's got chicken waste in it, but I, I could, I could look at that more, uh, closely if you want. As far as, um, you know, free-ranging, what, there, there seems to be some sense from the scientific community and bureaucrats that, you know, keeping wild birds from chickens has some, you know, merit. Uh, migratory birds sometimes carry disease. They come around and interact with the chickens. And if the chickens catch the disease, then they sort of into the food web, thus spreading disease. Our ordinance, um, basically makes it so that you have to contain the chickens in a coop or a shelter, and it all has to be netted in. So we don't allow free-ranging birds. Um, some, some other localities have allowed, you know, a fenced-in area to be considered a, a proper containment, but, but we didn't, and in, in terms of just trying to advance some quick changes that weren't too controversial, I didn't go there with the, uh, free-ranging.
Any additional comment, questions? Sure, please, uh, take the podium, name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Trebo, Dad, I'm at fourteen Princeton Drive. Um, I guess I don't really have any questions other than, um, first of all, um, just taking it seriously, for one, like, I, I just so appreciate the borough, like, looking at this, because you can't turn on the news now without thinking about food sources and just being sustainable. So this is great that the, the, our community is looking at this. I'm, I'm very excited about that. I was denied last year because of the sixty feet, and obviously that's being looked at. My only question is, why pick thirty? Like, what is, what is the, the thought behind that?
Um, so in my, in my memo, I, I tried not to be too snarky about, you know, the efficacy of setbacks. Um, I, you know, staff really can't judge whether or not a thirty-foot setback or a sixty-foot setback are really gonna have a measurable impact on disease control or nuisance mitigation. Um, but we, you know, as staff, you still wanna acknowledge that the community had some sense of protection from a setback. Um, and also acknowledge that other communities had adopted setbacks. So, from my list, most of them hadn't adopted anything, but I picked up one that was twenty-five feet, and another one was thirty. Uh, State College had a thirty-foot setback. And Ephrata had twenty-five feet.
Okay. Okay, so it's just more of a, just, uh, following what others are doing in the community?
Yeah, and again, just trying to be, um, responsive to the, you know, what the public wanted, uh, without digging too deep into i- issues that I probably can't measure.
Right, the only other question I have with the ordinance is that, obviously you're thinking of, how, looking at the community as whole, then how many people actually living in the borough under the new ordinances would this then allow chickens to be? Cause I, my thought is now, like, how many people actually could have chickens if they wanted with the current? So like, my thought is, if you're gonna have an ordinance, maybe it should be the majority of the people living in the community could actually then have it, if that makes any sense, to look at it that way.
Um, I mean, in terms of analysis, I, I did a spot check on several different parts of the borough to see if this would improve things, and it did. I think the biggest impact was deleting the minimum lot, 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 lot size. Um, again, the buffering, there seems to be some interest in preserving that within the community, uh, but potentially more stakeholder outreach would reveal that that's not such a big issue.
Okay, that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
And my last, um, thing is that we are in a, in a subcommittee together, uh, on looking at lots of other zoning reviews. And I did, um, press for this to be expedited in the name of spring chickens. And I do appreciate Jared, um, being able to push these through, um, in a thoughtful and, um, speedy way. Um, we have talked, uh, about urban agriculture ordinances to look at in the future, which so additional, um, aspects could, you know, be looked at further, uh, but the thought was that this is what has been preventative of allowing many folks that wanted to have chickens to be, actually be able to legally obtain them. Um, so I'm, uh, an advocate for chickens, and I appreciate, uh, this work being done, and, um, uh, and also I, I, I am looking forward to having more folks be able to bring their, uh, uh, experiences um, to any other revisions that would come in the future as well. Um, so thank you, Jared, for doing it.
Okay, so the, the motion we have before, before us obviously is in the ordinance itself. It's, uh, uh, just a direction to staff to, to, uh, move forward with the, uh, with the, a draft of the ordinance, work with the solicitor to, to do so, and then that'll come back before us, so there'll be another opportunity for comment. Any, anything further on any of this? Okay, um, then I'll, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Okay, under new business, I'm actually going to, to bring up an issue I've, I've heard, um, a bit about. I'm not asking for any action, obviously, it's not on the, the agenda tonight, just to, to raise the, raise the issue. I had been contacted by a couple of folks who had some concerns about our, our rental ordinance. And I know now, um, after a discussion with Borough Manager today, that, that, uh, staff has heard a bit about this issue. Our ordinance as it is right now, um, would cover if you're renting to your parent or your child or a close family member. I'm not sure that was the, the original intent of, of the ordinance. Um, in order to change that, if we would wish to do so, uh, we would need to amend, amend the ordinance definition. Um, what I, what I had, just off the top of the head, my head, um, in mind, if we wanna proceed with something like that, is to limit it to some degree of consanguinity. So it's, you know, parent, parent-child, um, maybe, maybe brother, grandparent, grandchild. I wouldn't, I would say probably not any, any further than, than that, because everybody's going to have a cousin who, who they're renting to. We may suddenly have a plethora of, uh, of children suddenly and grand, grandparents, but, um, but we'll, we'll have to work, if we were to move forward with that, um, we'd have to work through a way of verifying that, or at least having people sign off on it and swearing that they're, they're verifying it. Uh, but I wanted to just initially get some, some feedback to Council if you thought that was worthy based on what we all understand the intent of the rental ordinance to be.
So, so just to clarify, is that if the family member is paying, right? It's not, it's not impacting those who have an in-law or a parent moving with them?
Right, right, it's a separate rent. The way the ordinance is, it would be a separate rental unit, um, apart from, yeah, it's not like your, yeah, your, 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 your parents living with you and, and paying you some rent, yeah, wouldn't, would not include that. Um, cause the ordinance currently does not include that. It's just an additional carve-out. And yes, he had nods, so, okay, alright, thank you all. Um, any further public comment this eve, this evening? Do we, we still have no one by Zoom, Joyce? Okay, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.